Call the meeting order, police stand for pledge allegiance. Good evening, welcome to the August 25th session of your Brookings City Council. I'd ask city clerk, record attendance.
Mayor and council members, when I call your name, please respond present. Bacon?
Present.
Brink?
Present.
Collins?
Present.
Corbett?
Present.
Niemeyer?
Present.
Tilton Byrne?
Present.
Wendell?
Present.
Okay, council, first item is the consent agenda. Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion is seconded, any public comment? Council comment? Please call or roll.
Niemeyer?
Aye.
Tilton Byrne?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Bacon?
Aye.
Brink?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Corbett?
Aye. Consent agenda is approved. There are no items removed from the consent agenda, so at this time, I'll call on Brookings Police Chief Dave Erickson.
Good evening, mayor, council, members of the public. This evening, it is my honor to introduce to you Joe Fishbauer, our new Assistant Chief for the Brookings Police Department. Joe started his law enforcement career with the Viborg Police Department back in 1999. He then started with the Brookings PD in 2001 and worked in patrol for a couple of years. Joe was then selected as their School Resource Officer in 2003, and this is where we saw Joe flourish. Not only was he responsible for his SRO duties and performing law enforcement, including investigating crimes that happened within the schools, he also was a friend and a mentor to many of the kids throughout his time. Joe was passionate about his job, about our department, and most importantly, our community. Joe was selected as the SRO of the year in 2014. He won the Davis Award presented by CASA, the Optimist Officer of the Year, and was recognized by the VFW for his work with youth in the community. These awards show his commitment to this community and to our department. I'm not sure if many people may know, but Joe was one of the founding members of the Brookings County Youth Mentoring Program. Without his leadership and his countless hours of his own time, this program would not be where it is today. The program serves between 100 and 150 kids a year and is a vital part of what makes Brookings so great. Joe has also established the South Dakota School Resource Officer Association, which works to train South Dakota SROs in latest school laws, juvenile investigations, et cetera. Joe was responsible for bringing Christmas Kids and Cops to Brookings. He, along with Deputy Pike from the Sheriff's Office, got this incredible project started over 15 years ago. And because of Joe's efforts, 500 families in need have been reached and given an awesome Christmas experience. Joe came back to patrol in 2016, and in 2018, he was promoted to patrol sergeant. Joe played an important role in transforming the Brookings PD into the great department it is today. Joe is still currently involved in Christmas Kids and Cops program. He serves on the Domestic Abuse Shelter Board of Directors, helps teach Safety Town in the summer to our kids, and is highly involved in peer support and officer wellness within the department. So in conclusion, I'd just like to say, I selected Joe for the Assistant Chief position because of his experience and his qualities. Joe can be described in five words: compassionate, kind, humble, fair, and patient. Joe exemplifies these qualities every day with the members of the department and the community. Joe knows the value of community and will be a great leader for our newly formed community outreach team. I'm confident that Joe will do great things, and the officers and the community of Brookings will be the benefactors of that. So, I'd like to present to you Assistant Chief Joe Fishbauer. I don't have a fancy speech like that, but I guess a lot of you I know in this room and have worked with personally on certain things, but 20-some years I've been here, I'm just gonna keep doing what I've been doing and putting this community first. I'm putting the children in this community first, taking care of the officers, and taking care of the community. Be there to listen to the community and the people in it, treat people fairly, not pass unfair judgments, and do the best I can until the day I someday retire. So, I'll just say I'll do the best I can for you guys. I thank you for the opportunity.
Congratulations, Assistant Chief.
Thank you.
Chucking at the city manager, are we still gonna do a photo? Okay, normally, we'd come down and shake hands, but we aren't doing that anymore, as you well know. So, we're gonna have a socially distant photo, so if everybody just head down that way.
In the frame.
Okay, at this time, I have a mayoral proclamation. It says, "Whereas on August 26, 1920, the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution was signed into law guaranteeing women the right to vote; and whereas courageous activists fought for decades for women's suffrage, and whereas the city of Brookings will commemorate the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment by illuminating the Brookings City and County Government Building for the Forward Into Light Event on August 26, 2020, now therefore be it resolved that I Keith Corbett, Mayor of the City of Brookings, do hereby recommend that all our citizens and institutions celebrate the 19th Amendment, inspiring future generations to cherish and preserve the rights of all women." All right. Okay, now we'll open forum, anyone, yeah, there, oh, I'm sorry.
I observed that you had gone by the open forum.
Yes, we're getting right to that now, so, but it doesn't hurt to check.
I was very concerned. Okay.
Yeah, if you didn't.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, uh-huh.
Okay, there, there are two concerns that I bring to the city council. The first is a letter that was actually brought to the city council on the 11th and passed to the deputy mayor, and I have since asked her that she did receive it, and it was apparently emailed to you. It dealt with the retention pond where Molu Zapale drowned. I am speaking on behalf of Brookings Concerns and Creative Solutions Group, which is headed by Alex Hoffey. So, we have observed the community that over all this time, the ponds still are as they were before. The community came together. We presented in the letter, which you apparently did not receive, our ideas for a solution to the dangers of the retention pools. Reading from the letter that I'm to read on behalf of the group, "We hope our ideas will assist you in arriving at a viable solution to the issue of the danger of these ponds." The first recommendation was, "Consider transforming the drainage pit retention pond into a dry creek bed or rain garden and officially naming it for Molu as a memorial." It is believed that a dry creek bed or rain garden would keep the standing water level very low and encourage healthy and attractive plant growth. It would be appealing to the eye, and above all else, it would be safe. The group suggested that this actually could be a project for the Landscape Architectural Department or Extension Office at SDSU for their students to design and construct. The other recommendations were like draining the pools. Nobody supported fencing because they saw that that itself could become an attractive nuisance as kids tried to vault over the fence. The most important thing, or one of, was that the slippery material that is over the plastic lining on the sides and bottom, it was felt that if at least that could be covered with something with more texture so that anyone falling in would at least have a better footing and something to hold on to until helper us. We believe that if these safeguards are put in place, we will learn from the loss of Molu, and we can ensure a horrible tragedy like that will not happen to another child in Brookings. And of course, would help Molu's family heal from the horrendous loss they have experienced. So, that was from the Brookings Concerns and Creative Solutions Group. My question is, did the city council not get this letter even though it was submitted? And have you not discussed this idea, these concerns, or what plans do you have for the retention pond?
Okay, we placed this on a study session, but there's some more information we want as a council so we can do justice. I think everybody received the letter, I know I did, so, you know, I appreciate the letter. And so, we're, you know, looking back into all of these areas, so.
I think it would be considerate to at least let us know that you did receive the letter and that you are considering things. So then, the community doesn't feel like we get together and come up with ideas, and we're totally ignored by the city council. My second concern here, and I did not introduce myself, I will now. I am Dr. Fedora Sutton, PhD. I'm a resident of Brookings for over 30 years. I am CEO and Chief Research Scientist of Science Visions, Inc., a nonprofit established to provide science camps for the youth of Brookings. Some of you may remember those programs, they were put in place in 2006 and ran until 2010. And we are now involved in research efforts to address cancer health disparity. I'm also president of the recently formed organization, Brookings Justice Equity Transparency. It's a nonprofit established in July of this year after the Black Lives Matter demonstration in Brookings. So, before I proceed, I want to say that I'd like all of you who just thought all lives matter, that everyone accepts that all lives matter. All your family matters, members' lives matter. If your brother comes to you and says, "I'm being harassed, threatened, violated, my life matters," you would not say to him, "All our lives matter." You would say, "How can I help? What can we do?" So, this concern I bring is you just heard that we have a new chief assistant, assistant chief. Okay? I bring some concerns as personal, as a resident, and they're as part of ensuring that Brookings remains ahead of the game and does not become like any other city in our state. I think it's imperative that we have a good relationship with the police department, and certainly, there is a group that's working on that. But what I want to say is, there was the mass murder in the Charleston church, June 17, 2015. This is Charleston, South Carolina. Nine African-Americans were killed, murdered during a Bible study at the Emmanuel African Methodist Episcopal Church. You may remember this. The members of that community did not strap on guns and go out to kill all the young white men who represented the killer. Instead, they said they forgave him and would pray for him. In 2016, in Dallas, Texas, a black Army veteran killed five police officers for their involvement in killing unarmed black men. This was horrific and is not supported by anyone who values life. Here in Brookings, upon hearing about the situation in Dallas, Officer Joe, then Officer Joe, wrote on his Facebook page, "I have never in my career wanted to strap on my gear and go hunting more than I do at this moment as I listen to the police scanner in Dallas, Texas." Officer Joe never mentioned the veteran, but we, black people, understood his words to mean hunting us. For certainly, he was not going out hunting veterans. Fishbauer went on to say, "Looking like it's time for every traffic stop to be a felony stop now and no less than two officers in every car. As blacks, people of color, and indigenous folks, we know what that means and who the target is. We, especially our men, know what it is to be driving while black. Just the sight of our rich pigment is enough for a police officer to pull you over and then find a reason to have pulled you over, in which case, the end could be the loss of your life." Why would we be concerned when a police officer, who lost control of his emotions one day, apparently threatened to pull the traffic stop routine on presumably members of his community? After all, he was not in Dallas, and presumably, he must be considering the black members of the community, since the gunman in Dallas was black. If the members of the AME church in Charleston, who had nine members murdered in the church, could pray instead of dashing out to kill whites, should we not expect our police officers to know enough to have perspective? Around this nation, black men and women are being murdered by police officers, who we expect to protect and serve. The world viewed the murder of George Floyd. There was enough time for that policeman to take his knee off of Floyd's neck. And when we hear police officers spout off about killing black folks and people of color, we cannot help but be alarmed. The badge should not be a license to kill with impunity or express a personal racism against others. In Wilmington, North Carolina, June 25, 2020, three longtime police officers were fired after a video of their racist conversation was discovered. One officer says that a civil war is needed to wipe them off the effin' map. That would put them back about four or five generations. What are the views now, four years later, of the new Assistant Chief Joe Fishbauer? We don't know. What are the views of the chief of police that allows him to choose, that allowed him to choose Joe, excuse me, Assistant Chief Joe, as the new Assistant Chief? We heard wonderful things, he's wonderful with the kids. He was a great resource officer. We hold all those things very important, yes. But we are at a time where people's lives are endangered, and the views of the police regarding fairness of treatment of all members of the community is critical, not just how good they were with children. It is imperative that as Brookings moves forward, that the community has a greater role in choosing the leaders of the BPD, who will be involved in the decisions of the department's attitude towards all members of the community. The chief says that Chief Assistant Joe Fishbauer was the best man for the job. We wish him well, and we hope that we can expect him to treat all members of the community, regardless of their pigment levels and ethnicity as human beings. Thank you.
Thank you, and I mentioned, you know, the personnel issues are handled by the city manager, so if you have questions or comments in the future, please visit with the city manager, and he's very open door and very receptive.
I think it's critical, I hear you, I will go to the city manager. But it's critical that the city council hears this. You all stood and wonderful, wonderful, but how was this done? Why is there no transparency? Why is the community not involved? This is important, you're choosing ahead of the BPD. I think the city council must play their role in ensuring that there is transparency in all the entities that the city council is involved in.
Thank you, Dr. Sutton. Normally, we don't comment when a person presents. Go ahead, I can see the look in your eyes. Go ahead and comment.
Could you come back up here, please, ma'am? Thank you. So, in your mind, when Assistant Chief Fishbauer made those statements, you thought it was to kill black people? Is that what you assume?
I am saying to you that nine people were murdered in a church in South Carolina, and they did not say, "We're going to go and shoot everybody." It is, to a certain extent, the point is, this police officer, yes, he's angry that some of his colleagues were killed, but he's going to go out and start shooting? Exactly where is he strapping these guns on and going? Where?
Can you just answer my question?
No, you are trying to attempt to go to say, "Joe Fishbauer is not racist." I never said Joe Fishbauer is racist. I spoke as a person, a black person, who can tell you when certain things are said, the black veteran who killed those men was black and a veteran. You tell me exactly who Joe Fishbauer was going out to strap on his guns against. You tell me.
I will, I will.
Okay. Okay, enough bantering back forth.
He was talking about cop killers. People going around killing cops.
I don't wish to hear any excuses.
You should know what you're talking about before you come up here and start talking.
I do not wish to hear excuses from you for unacceptable behavior.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I apologize for that.
Okay, open forum, anybody else? Seeing none, close the open forum at this time. Ordinances and first reading, I turn it over to Assistant City Manager for ordinance 20-18.
Good evening, mayor and members of the council. Ordinance 20-18 is the first reading of the budget ordinance. The total 2021 budget is $54 million, which is approximately a 2% overall decrease from the 2020 budget. This includes a balanced general fund budget of $16.8 million. Public works, public safety, and parks, recreation, and forestry account for over 70% of total general fund expenditures. Sales tax, property tax, and transfers account for over 80% of general fund revenue. As part of the general fund budget, staff estimated a 2% reduction in sales tax due to COVID-19. This necessitated a $300,000 decrease in general fund expenditures as compared to the 2020 budget. This budget also includes a $9.3 million capital improvement budget that maintains or replaces existing facilities, vehicles, and equipment. In sum, the 2021 budget is lean, streamlined, balanced, and sustainable. With that, I'll open it up for any questions.
Okay. At this time, we'll, remember on first readings, we do allow comments and discussion by the city council or anybody in the audience. Anyone care to speak to this topic? Okay, council members, comments or questions? Okay, there'll be a second reading on September 8th. Moving along then to introduction and first reading on ordinance 20-16, as city manager to introduce this topic.
Good evening, mayor, city council members. City code allows sidewalk cafes. Cafes are utilized, are utilization of the public sidewalk to sell food and drinks. An application grants permission, assuming the parameters are met. The cost for set permit is $100. The current COVID ordinance restricts businesses at to 50% occupancy. To increase potential use of the sidewalk permit, staff is recommending waiving the $100 fee for one year. I'd be happy to answer any questions council might have of this request, but I do also know that downtown director is here as well. If you should have any questions of her, as she did survey some of the local businesses downtown, and there's interest in utilization of this application.
Ashley, do you have anything you'd like to speak to this topic? I gather three or two thumbs up means it's a good idea. Okay, anybody else in the public? No hand gestures, please, just, anyone care to speak this? Okay, council members, comments, questions, council member Brink?
I do have a question. Thank you for putting this together. I was curious if we have data on how many of these permits we typically have active in a given year in Brookings? And then, also clarification, would this just be for the downtown district, or could this be used in other places in the community as well?
I'd turn to the city clerk for the history of utilization.
In recent years, there has been zero applications on file for this. Probably in the last 15 years, maybe we've had two, maybe three.
As far as utilization outside the downtown, it could be applicable. It all depends on how much sidewalk space there is. There is a requirement that we do meet ADA space limitations, and so, if they could provide that requirement, we could work with the individual. Many times, though, the restaurants are located on a private business, so that includes the parking lot. So, they have the ability to actually extend beyond their current building footprint if they should choose to do so. It would just have to stay within the requirements of the property boundary that's listed on their liquor permit.
And then, maybe a related question, I noticed that this is for businesses that do 50% of their revenue from food sales. Was this idea considered at all for bars or establishments that don't sell food? Or what are the pros and cons of that decision?
Yeah, I'd have to turn that over to our city attorney, since this was done here a few years ago.
Yeah, the structure is basically based on the state statute that permits sidewalk sales. So, we did model this ordinance after the state statute. So, it is really tied to restaurant sales or food sales.
And we don't have any state precedents for other type of sales that way?
No, please, no.
Okay, thank you.
Council, any other?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I have a question in regards to that footage that's needed in order to apply for this. I do see in the application where it references how many feet of unobstructed passages necessary. And I'm wondering, within our downtown district, how many businesses are there that would have enough sidewalk space to be eligible to apply for this? Do we have those kind of numbers?
We do not as staff.
Council member Tilton Byrne, did you hear him?
Yes, I think if we, if there's any way to figure out, you know, what businesses would have the ability to do this, I wonder if some of the reason we haven't seen many applications is because businesses don't know whether or not they would qualify. And I think it would be helpful if we did know just how many, and maybe even which locations of businesses would have enough sidewalk to even facilitate this. Because I have heard in the past that that may be a barrier for some businesses where they actually, they would love to have some kind of outdoor sidewalk seating, but they don't have the necessary footage in order to be able to apply for it.
Council member does bring up an interesting point. And one thing I would like to point out is there are very many different alternative designs that businesses can utilize. I've been in other communities where they utilized a kind of a bar top rather than... I've been in other communities where they utilized a kind of a bar top rather than the eight-foot table to limit the number, to limit the space that actually encroaches into that eight-six-foot right-of-way. So there are plenty of opportunities. So if businesses, and I did reach out to the downtown director, if businesses do see hindrances with this ordinance, or the way in which it's applied, I would ask that they contact us and, and ask the director to communicate that to the businesses, and we'll try to work with them as much as possible to, to achieve this, because I think it would be a great opportunity to start building sense of place, if you will, especially once you have gatherings in the public in downtown, while still encouraging that social distancing and the requirements within the ordinance. So this is a great opportunity to really build the downtown into something that we're seeing across the nation, but once again, we're really open to working with the businesses as well to achieve this.
Councilmembers, any other questions?
Maybe this is a dumb question, but is, is this seasonal at all? I mean, I know we could have some assumptions about how the weather would impact things like this, but are there any other restrictions on it for seasons?
There are none.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, there'll be a second reading on September 8th. Next one, I ask city manager to introduce the, first reading on ordinance 20-17.
Thank you, Mayor, city council members. The current ordinance, which is our Phase 3, is set to expire September 8th. Ordinance 2010, which is our current ordinance, requires employees of bars, restaurants, and salons to wear masks. The law also provides additional regulations on social distancing with specific businesses, limitations of occupancy, and retail regulations. The current thresholds was included within your packet and updated today. Specific metrics measured, measure the epidemic control, healthcare capacity, and mitigation testing efforts. The only metric that we meet currently within the thresholds is the hospitalization capacity. Mitigation through testing was closed based on the number of positive cases noted within the report. Staff does recommend the extension of the current ordinance, and I would note within the memo, I did lay out two potential amendments to have a conversation amongst council. The first one is that council can amend the ordinance to address residential gatherings of 10 or more. This will give the police department the ability to address parties that are not called in. That's traditionally how we address some of these larger gatherings throughout the community. More importantly, it does allow PD to address gatherings quicker. The other amendment that I did throw in the memo for consideration or discussion is consideration of requirement of masks in public places. I did reach out to a number of university communities to understand what type of regulations are, are included, are, are enacted, and of course, it's all across the board, depending on the state, the governor, what have you. I will tell you that Vermillion does have within their ordinance, masks are expected language outside of their businesses, but it has no regulatory actions behind it. It's, it's more or less just asking people to address and wear a mask. Any amendment can be heard tonight, the council may want to consider. The second reading would occur September 8th, and I would be happy to answer any questions you might have of this recommendation.
At this time, open up public comment, anyone from the public here to speak to this? Okay, close the public. Councilmembers, comments or questions? Oh, yeah, well.
Bradley Walker, resident of Brookings. I am a little confused about if you are adding more provisions to this ordinance or just extending.
That would be the decision of the council, if they want to extend it or amend, to add as the city manager commented on.
Okay. Well, my concern is that I would like to know what happens to a person when they test positive. I don't seem to be able to find any answers for that, and I can't find any answers of what they're doing at SDSU for that. It seems to me that if a person tests positive, they should be required to isolate from the community until they are deemed by the Department of Health to be cleared of all symptoms. This is, this is why we have contact tracing, and so you identify the person who is sick. That person, it doesn't need to be publicly acknowledged or spread, but the Department of Health knows who that person is, and the Department of Health should require that person to remain out of circulation in the public to prevent the spread, which is what we're trying to accomplish, correct? And then, so that's the idea of contact tracing. So if you are, have been in contact with this person that has been tested positive, you are supposed to quarantine yourself, even though you don't have symptoms, you are supposed to quarantine yourself for the amount of period, 10 days, I believe it is. I looked at the, the guidelines for isolation versus quarantine. But my point is, if SDSU, our, the population of our city has, has increased by a third. We went from roughly 22,000 people to, I mean, we gained 11,000 students at SDSU, so our population has gained by a third. And if SDSU is doing their own testing, or the, one of the students gets tested positive, regardless of who does the testing, and the Department of Health contacts that person, there is, I've, I've read their thing, there's a set of things that they have to do, they have to notify this, and notify that, notify this, notify teachers, but it doesn't say anything about them having to isolate until they are symptom-free, or they test negative. So, it doesn't seem to me to do any good to put restrictions and regulations on people who are not sick, when you allow the people that are actually sick and capable theoretically of spreading the disease throughout the community to remain in circulation, so to speak. So, until that question is addressed, I don't see why there should be any more provisions added to this existing ordinance. And as, as I recall, the way this whole thing started was, a student from SDSU had traveled overseas, came back, tested positive, and then went out into the bars that night and started the spread of, I mean, it was bound to get here sooner or later, not this one, but that's what, how I recall, the essential original, origination of this virus spread in our community. My point being is if that person had been required to go into isolation and not allowed to go out into the public to potentially spread the disease, like I said, I mean, I'm sure it would have happened sooner or later, but it could have been avoided. And then, as I recall, the, the owner, business owner of the downtown district took it upon themselves to close their businesses before the city council produced any ordinance requiring them to do so. Maybe I'm wrong, I'm just, that's how I recall it. But my point, my point that I'm trying to make is, until you make provisions for people, I mean, supposedly it's voluntary that you're supposed to isolate and do this and that, but, you know, we've seen what happens with college kids, and they, I'm not putting it on them, but I'm just saying, with the big increase of them coming in, and they're, you know, "Well, I'm okay, just because I, I'm, I'm not going to spread it to anybody." The point is, if you knowingly have the disease, you should be required to isolate until your disease, your symptoms, or you test negative. Thank you.
You might want to call the State Health Department and have that conversation with them, because that might be something you want to visit with them about, for accuracy. Yeah. I, I know what you're saying, Bradley, but I'm just saying, the State Health Department's the one that, the one you want to have that conversation with.
It says, you know, required, in case of a public health emergency, it can be required. And I don't know who has the power to make that decision, but it seems to me that you are using the term "public health emergency" to create these ordinances to restrict the businesses from operation and supposedly slow the spread, which is, you know, it was two weeks, well, flattened the curve, well, the curve was flattened. One other thing that I would like to talk about is the thresholds for moving into and out of the phases. The, I don't know if you can pull it up real quick, but the, the chart that you have on your website where it has the past 106 days in the graph and everything, I think it should be updated to where it shows specific dates on there. Instead of, it has just June, July, August at the bottom of the, of the graph. And it seems to me, looking at that graph, that nowhere in the past 106 days, even further back in June, did we, were we below the threshold that you have set of less than one of the R with the little T next to it. So, to me, that threshold is unattainable now, in order to make it let us go into the next phase, because even the data for statewide, which, you know, encompasses a whole broader territory, and, you know, half the counties in South Dakota don't have any cases at all, even their average is above one for the past month. So again, it would be helpful if there were specific dates, and you could see specific 14-day periods on that graph to show where we are, how close we are, if we're getting closer, if we're getting farther away. That's it.
Okay, thank you. President Dunn, I see you look in your face here, you want to speak to this.
Well, good evening, everyone. Barry Dunn, president of South Dakota State University. Certainly appreciate your support, I, we support this ordinance. Just to, to be clear, the testing we do at South Dakota State, which we're actually ramping up now even more, but if, if a, a person tests positive, the, the State Health Department orders them into isolation, and we are providing rooms for isolation and quarantine for those close contacts at SDSU, and just thought I'd clear that up.
Thank you, President.
Hi, Bill Allsaker, 30611 Street. I just, I don't think we're doing enough right now to stop the spread, so any amendments that the city council is willing to adopt to increase safety, I think would be good moves. I think everybody has seen the sights of the large, not even a line, but a large mob of maskless young people trying to get in a certain bar on, on Main Avenue, and I just don't think, looking at the positive testing rates, I don't think that things are good right now. And I know sometimes people don't get alarmed until the hospitalizations are bad, but of course, that's a lagging indicator. So I just hope we don't wait until taking any further steps until we get to that point. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, council, back to you, comments or questions? Councilmembers, Councilman Wendell.
Thank you, Mayor Corbett. I appreciate staff pulling together some potential amendments as we consider how to move forward, whether we extend this ordinance or amend it in any way. I did have a question about the first bullet, which notes one potential amendment or action could be restricting all residential gatherings larger than 10 people, and I understand by placing that restriction, it might give the Brookings Police Department a little more freedom to respond, but I'm curious what the enforcement might look like, how we would actually live up to such an amendment if we were to attach it to this ordinance?
I could see it going a couple different ways. Right now, what we try to do is educate the, the individuals, the homeowners. If they continue to do, have parties, gatherings that would violate this, there would be a potential fine of, of, I believe, $100 is the first level, and, and I'd look to Dave, or the police chief on that. If there are alcohol violations associated with it, that fine could increase as much as $1,000, and people should be cognizant of that, as they have parties and events in this community, that if there are alcohol-related issues with it, that, there is that potential. And I, I would ask that the police department addresses many of those situations we have throughout the community, now more than ever because of the potential spread of COVID. So Dave, maybe you can answer, if you're still here, the potential fines and, and what your process is currently.
Before you speak, chief, could I just maybe clarify? I am certainly interested in the after-action, what happens, but I'm, I want to make sure we touch on what would precede you taking action, or an officer taking action, to break up a residential gathering over 10? I mean, what would be the threshold before an officer might take action if we were to amend the ordinance in this way?
Sure, and, and a lot of that depends on guidance from council as far as the ordinance itself and how it reads, guidance from city manager as far as how we're going to enforce. If it's treated like any other ordinance or state law violation, as long as there's a violation that's visible to an officer, it becomes probable cause for them to make contact and take action. Simply put. And then, the other question was, as far as fines, the disturbing the peace, the current fine here, I believe it's around the $126 range. Our current ordinance violation right now is a $262 fine, so it could be something that's tailored after that. The $1,000 fine that, that Paul spoke of is a state law violation of common nuisance, which violates any alcohol law. So if we have underage drinking, or if they're selling keg beer without a license, things of that nature.
Councilmember Bacon.
Chief, while you're still up here, I know this time of year is already, you end up, your, your team ends up combing my neighborhood a lot, which I understand and respect, is asking you to do this above and beyond that, or pretty much they're going to be the same gatherings anyway? So hopefully, we're not adding too much to your workload?
So, with an ordinance such as this, it would allow, like Paul said, was to give us more ability to respond to them, because right now, if there's a house party, we could drive by, but unless it was evident that there was somebody there that's underage, say for example, we really can't make contact with them at that point unless we get a complaint about disturbing the peace, or somebody gives us information that they know that there's underage drinkers at the location. So we'll drive around, we'll see a lot of people gathered in front yards, you know, playing beanbags, whatever, but we don't stop and engage those people because we don't have the articulable, reasonable suspicion to stop for those types of violations. Now, this ordinance would allow a, it's a gathering of over 10, then we'd be able to stop. I would add, though, that we have responded to 11 house parties in the last three weeks. Of those, most were not, citations were not given, and a lot of times what happens, we'll have very busy nights, and with limited resources, and so, in order to, to cite a lot of people, it takes a considerable amount of time, and if we have other calls waiting, a lot of, quite often what happens is, the officers will get the renters' names, log a warning, kick everybody out, move on to the next call. So, obviously, there are slow times where they could deal with something like this, but again, there could be that expectation that that's how these would be handled as well.
Councilmember Brink.
I also wanted to build on what councilmember Wendell asked earlier, and just be very sure I understand, if we were to look at an ordinance like this, we would just be saying that those gatherings that are visible in an outdoor area, we'd have the ability, you'd have the ability to stop and ask some questions. It would have nothing to do with gatherings inside a residence? Question I'm getting at is, what if we, what if someone in the community speculates or, or thinks maybe that their neighbor has more than 10 college students in their apartment, are we going to do anything about that? And would, would this council be advocating that we are looking into those types of situations? I just want to be really clear with what would be happening on the front end of that as well.
I guess I can answer from a, a legal perspective, in that if we received a call from you, and you thought that your neighbor had more than 10 people in there, as the officer would need to ask you, okay, how can you tell? Did you actually see 10 or more people walk into that residence? I have to be able to establish that information, that evidence, that justifies my I have to be able to establish that information, that evidence, that justifies my response. So if you're just like, well, there's four cars out there or five cars out there, figure two people came in each car, there's got to be 10. You know, that wouldn't cut it, of course. So there'd have to be actual articulable evidence that you could relay to us saying that there were more than 10 people in there.
Thank you. That's, that's helpful.
One of the things that I would mention, and Dave mentioned our limited force, and I don't think a lot of people understand, we at any given night on a Friday or Saturday night, how many officers, officers do we have, Dave?
Our minimum staffing is five. So anywhere between five and seven is what we have on.
So if you have a traffic stop and a party, you probably all force out, just those two events, maybe one person left. So the, the reality is, we're going to have limited ability to address some of this anyways at those evening times.
Correct.
I wondered about that, and I actually also wondered if there was a, a possible unintended consequence of something like this. I, I only am speculating here, but it seems to me that it's possible that if you're a college student and you think, I'm going to get in trouble if all my friends are in the yard, all my friends are just coming inside the house where they can't be seen and therefore potentially more people inside a closed, enclosed, poor-ventilated location. And so I just, I just think that's something to bring into the conversation as well.
Councilmember Tiltonburn, did you have a question or comment?
Yeah, along the same lines on this topic, I'm wondering, would, would an amendment such as this be just pertinent to unrelated individuals? Would families still fall within this? And if a resident was able, a residence was able to have 10 people that were socially distanced, so maintain that six-foot distance and wear masks, would, would they then be allowed to have 10 or more people? I'm just curious to know what those kinds of stipulations would be on an amendment such as this.
I really think it's, it's dependent upon what the council would desire. If, if the guidance is only addressing outdoor gatherings and having some of that requirements, then we would address it as such. I'd probably turn it over to the city attorney, because I know you have done a lot of research on this.
Yeah, and I think certainly families of any size would be excluded from the social gathering restrictions. And it would be narrowly tailored to address the, the situation with parties, which we regulated and dealt with for many years. So we'd probably utilize the same approach with respect to social gatherings as we've done with disturbances that have occurred over the years. And there aren't that many repeat offenders, I would say, based on many years of experience in prosecuting these. Usually the warnings and perhaps if there is a complaint filed, we don't see the same people in court for those. And so I think it could be helpful in terms of, of that aspect of limiting problems with large gatherings.
Thank you. Okay, council, so the way it reads now, this will just, is it your desire to extend it? You want to amend it? Second reading is September 8th, in which, of course, the current ordinance would retire on that date. So what's, what's your interest now? Leave it alone?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Tiltonburn?
I have an additional question on an unrelated topic to the 10-person gather, gathering. I know that I have received several questions and from conversations I've had, I believe other councilmembers have had similar questions about the ordinance we currently have in place and how it relates to retail establishments. We know that these restrictions are placed on restaurants, bars, salons, barber shops, certain types of businesses, but, but not necessarily retail establishments. I'm wondering if we can just take a moment to kind of clarify that for the public and understand what the ordinance does to retail establishments as it's currently written.
Thank you, councilmember, for that opportunity. There, there is a lot of questions regarding that segment of businesses. Retailers within the ordinance are required to provide a barrier between the customer and the employee at the cash register. The reason behind that is that there is a very limited time that the employee is engaging the customer. And from what we understand, it's usually a 15-minute space within six feet or less that creates a higher risk for potential exposure. And so therefore, most of the engagement between the customer and the employee is usually less, much less than that, and therefore, a barrier would suffice. City attorney, I think, if you would clarify if I'm correct, and then reading that section of the ordinance.
Is that helpful? Councilmember Tiltonburn?
I would also, I would also note that retail establishments are not required, are not required in the ordinance that their employees are to wear masks, that a lot of people assume that, that is not part of the requirement. But many retail establishments have required their employees to wear masks, which we do appreciate.
Well, thank you, Chief.
You bet.
Okay, now hearing anything else? Any desire to amend or otherwise we'll move this to September 8th?
I'm Carrie Papka. Am I getting it clear that you want to add to this, that you want people to wear masks all the time?
What was presented to city council is a renewal of the existing ordinance. What I provided in my memo is two amendments that city council could have a discussion on. What the mayor's requesting right now is, does the, the city council want to extend the current ordinance? Or would they like to amend it with anything that I presented? So that, that's the discussion that's happening right now before you.
As of right now, this will, second reading and vote from the council will be on September 8th. Nothing's been amended or added to it. Okay? Okay, we'll have on September 8th be the second reading. Now we'll go to public hearings and second readings. I'd turn the next several, at least four, over to the city clerk.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers and audience. The next four items on the agenda are pertaining to MG Oil Company. They're doing business as the Lanes. This, so this would pertain to items eight, A, B, C, and D. MG Oil has applied for two additional on-off malt licenses for 722 Western Avenue, as well as applying for the, for up to 20 additional video lottery machines to be placed at this location. This is the former Prairie Lanes bowling alley. Owners are Marlin Erickson and Troy Erickson. MG Oil is creating two additional spaces within the existing building, which would then allow for up to 30 video lottery machines at this location. In order to satisfy state video lottery regulations, there must be separate and distinct physical facilities maintained and utilized for the sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages for each of these separately described premises. Staff did conduct a walkthrough of this facility on July 16th and indicated the separate spaces have been designated and sales and consumption of alcoholic beverages are intended to occur at these two additional locations within the building. All required documentation has been submitted to the city. Following city council action, both the malt and the video lottery licenses would be held pending permit issuance and final inspection of the facility for the community development department. Once secured, the applications will be forwarded to the South Dakota Department of Revenue for final action and issuance on those licenses if the council approves. Representatives from MG Oil are present this evening if you have any questions.
Yeah, open this up to public hearing at this time. Do the applicants care to speak to this? Sir, if you just introduce yourself, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Troy Erickson. I'm president of MG Oil Company. We're the applicant here and filled out the application, I think, February 28th. Have been at a couple of meetings now and just kind of hoping we can get the licenses and proceed forward. We do realize if you issue the licenses, we have to follow, get through the building process, which we're in full construction right now. I think a couple of people have come over and looked at our facility in the afternoons if anyone wants to come and view. It's kind of a mess of construction project now, but we're hoping to be done second week of October, it looks like right now. So we've got a little ways to go, but I'm here to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public care to speak to? Right now, we're addressing the on-off malt license. Councilmembers care to speak to the on-off malt license?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, councilmember Tiltonburn?
I'm curious to receive a little bit of clarity on what the, how the, the differentiating units or spaces within the building will function and how the sale of malt beverages will, will be managed and, and watched and handled within each suite.
Okay, Mr. Erickson, you address that, please. Right now, we're voting on Suite B, but then Suite C is coming up also, so.
Sure, sure. Inside the building, if you've been in there, we've designated separate rooms for the malt beverage licenses. They will have separate storage, separate coolers, and separate cash registers for the video lottery, which we're going to monitor with attendance, as well as video surveillance on the whole facility. I think we're going to have about 60 cameras in different areas, inside and outside. So that's how we plan on doing it. Does that answer your question?
Will each suite be individually staffed at all times?
Not each room at all times. Certain, certain times of the day, we're not going to be open in certain areas of the Basically, the bar probably won't be open until later on in the afternoon. Some of the lottery rooms will, the bowling area will. So different times, it's going to be different staff at the locations. But sometimes, you know, the doors will be locked to come from the outside, but the person running the bowling alley portion will be able to view the lottery rooms from the front desk. They'll have video surveillance and we'll have door buzzers and things like that.
So if the suite is open and for operation, there will be someone staffing that suite?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmembers, any other questions? This time, entertain a motion to approve the on-off malt license for Block 1 of Suite B.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion and second. Council, discussion? Bonnie, please call the roll.
Tiltonburn?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Bacon?
Aye.
Brink?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Corbett?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so Suite B is taken care of. Next is the public hearing in action on request for video license in Block 1, Suite B. Once again, open up any public comment on this item. Mr. Erickson spoke to it and any other public comment? Close public comment at this time. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
We have motion and second. Council comments or questions?
I guess I'd just like to make a comment. I really appreciated the opportunity to go and see the, the bowling alley renovation in, in progress. And it's very exciting to see the investment coming into the community and providing another recreational opportunity for people of all ages that'll, that'll help out in the wintertime here in, in Brookings, too. So I was very impressed with the plans and just wanted to say thank you.
Councilmembers, any other comments? Okay, Bonnie, please call the roll.
Wendell?
Aye.
Bacon?
Aye.
Brink?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Corbett?
Aye.
Tiltonburn?
Aye.
Okay, the video lottery license for MG Oil for Suite B has been approved. Next, the public hearing in action on request for on-off malt license for Block 1, Suite C. I don't know, Mr. Erickson, if you want to speak to that or just, okay, stand by. Any other public comment on this? Seeing none, council, we need a motion to approve.
Moved to approve?
Second.
We have motion and second. Okay, council, comments or questions? Councilmember Tiltonburn, any questions?
Nope, none for me.
Not to put you on the spot, I just can't see you. So anyway, okay, please call the roll.
Bacon?
Aye.
Brink?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Corbett?
Aye.
Tiltonburn?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Okay, for Suite C, on-off malt license is approved. Next one, video lottery for MG Oil for Suite C. Any public comment on that? Seeing none, close public comment. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Okay, take that as a motion and second.
Second.
Council, comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Brink?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Corbett?
Aye.
Tiltonburn?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Bacon?
Aye.
Okay, video lottery is approved for that one. Ready, city clerk?
Mayor, councilmembers and audience, the next two items on the agenda are pertaining to BP of Brookings. This would be items nine A and B on your agenda. BP of Brookings is applying for a second on-off malt license for the 2426th Street location and the addition of up to 10 video lottery machines. Owners are Dan Park and Lance Park. BP of Brookings is converting the former car wash location into two spaces, which would allow for up to 20 additional, 20 video lottery machines total at this location. In order to satisfy state video lottery regulations, there must be separate and distinct physical facilities maintained and utilized for the sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages for each of these separately described premises. BP of Brookings has secured a building permit through the city community development department and plans submitted show the layout satisfies state law requirements for sales and consumption of alcoholic beverages. All required documents have been submitted. Following city council action, the malt and video lottery licenses would be held pending permit issuance and final inspection of the facility per the community development department. Once secured, if approved by the council, the applications would then be forwarded to the South Dakota Department of Revenue for final action and issuance. Representatives from BP of Brookings are present if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Either one of the Mr. Parks care to speak to this? Dan, introduce yourself, please. Nobody knows anybody under masks, so yeah.
I know, right? Yeah. Good evening, Mayor, council. Thanks for having me. My name is Dan Park. I'm here to represent the BP of Brookings. And as Bonnie said, we've got a great project going out there at our location, really think it'll add to our business out there. For those who haven't been out there, it's our car wash space, so it looks pretty beat up right now, but we hope with this additional business, this part of it, that, you know, really kind of transform that, give us good curb appeal. We got other big projects coming down the road and we're excited for this first piece. So we hope, hope, encourage you to approve.
Okay, thank you.
I'll stand by for questions.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comments? Seeing none, close public comment. Councilmembers, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
We have motion and second. Council, comments or questions?
So just a question, we're, we're only approving, it's obviously the next one, we're only approving for one casino basically right now, correct?
They currently have the license for 10 video lottery machines out there to go with their current on-off. This is an application for an additional on-off license with an additional 10 video lottery machines.
All right, okay. I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Bonnie, please call the roll.
Collins?
Aye.
Corbett?
Aye.
Tiltonburn?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Bacon?
Aye.
Brink?
Aye.
And finally, video lottery for Park Place. Entertain or open public comment at this time? Anyone care to speak to this? Dan, I assume you just want to stand by?
Sure.
Okay. Council, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion and a second. Council, comments or questions? Letting him off pretty easy. Bonnie, please call the roll.
Corbett?
Aye.
Tiltonburn?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Bacon?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Okay, video lottery for Park Place is approved. All right, we're calling up the assistant city manager for a progress report.
Evening, Mayor, members of the council. I haven't done this in person for a while, so I'm not sure I remember how, but we'll go for it anyway. Starting off with a COVID update, city manager will get into this in a little bit more detail after this report, but we do have currently 195 cases within Brookings County. Those numbers were current as of 11:45 a.m. this morning. 159 of those 195 were listed as recovered. There's been a total of just over 32. There's been a total of just over 3,200 tests done so far. We find ourselves in the moderate community spread according to the South Dakota Department of Health website at this time. We have ordered 5,000 of those Brookings Strong Together masks. We've received about 1,000 of them so far. Uh, 250 of those were handed out at Feeding Brookings. We did distribute some to the Brookings Municipal Liquor Store, as well as the library, as well as a few other organizations throughout the community to distribute. As we receive more of those, we will continue to distribute them and hand those out. Uh, the recently presented reopening roadmap and the faces are on the updated coronavirus info webpage on the city's website, and also encourage everyone to, uh, tune into the South Dakota Department of Health for the latest updates and information. The 20th Street Interchange Project is rolling along. It is currently on schedule. Uh, the 30% cost estimate will be presented to City Council. It is anticipated for early September. The preferred interchange layout is anticipated to go live on the project website at the end of this week. Um, staff and the consultants are currently working on the environmental assessment, as well as the preliminary design in the snippet and the picture that you see of the project website. Encourage all to check out the resources and comments section, as those are very helpful and comprehensive. The Bob Sheldon Field renovation is also on schedule and on budget at this point. Um, the contractor is working on placing the topsoil, installing fence posts, uh, working on dugouts, and then getting that infield aggregate material, uh, into the infield for the turf installation. They are anticipating that turf and sod will be installed in early, early to mid-September. You will see the project completion date is listed there for 2021. It is anticipated the only component to be remaining in '21 will be the parking lot, but there may be some finishing touches, as well as, uh, punch list items to complete at that time. The 6th Street project between Main and Midary, this is a State Department of Transportation project. As of now, the paving is complete. Uh, crews are now working on some of those finalizing items that you see before you. I did learn today from our city engineer that they are anticipating to open the road by the end of this week, um, so we're very hopeful for that. The original completion date was for September 2020, so there is some time remaining on the project, but as of now, it does look like that road is going to be open ahead of schedule. Moriarty Park Drainage, uh, project, most of the work there is complete as well. The ramps are complete, the sidewalk is complete. The next steps that you'll see are the grading and seating of the actual pond bed itself. That is slated for September of 2020 to align with that fall growing season, and it is anticipated that that project will be completed in September as well. 20th Street South, crews are currently working on, uh, placing topsoil in the boulevards along the completed sidewalk. The next steps are installing the curb and gutter on the west end of the project, as well as completing the paving. Uh, contract stipulates that the completion date of that project is October 2020. The contractors are ahead of schedule, but again, uh, due to competing demands and other projects going on in the community, there is, uh, some timing questions there yet, but again, hoping to have that project completed as soon as possible. Our overlay project for this year is currently underway. You may have noticed some crews around the community, starting to the millings and removing that top layer of asphalt. Uh, the picture before you tonight does show the areas that will be milled and overlaid for this season. I do want to put one comment on there that you'll notice Faculty Drive, the entire horseshoe, is highlighted in red. This is actually going to be a two-phase project. The eastern half will be milled and overlaid this season in 2020. The remainder of the project will be in 2021 to tie in with some stormwater improvements in that area. Concrete maintenance project is underway. Uh, there's been some new sidewalk installed at a couple of locations throughout the community. The next step in that will be the A Street South ramp starting in early September, and the completion date on this project is October 2020 as well. As council may notice, it is the, uh, probably the height of the construction season right now. The Swiftell Center hosted three cattle shows within the month of July. All of those were conducted within the city-approved Swiftell Center Health Safety Program. Some statistics that were provided from that were, there were about 15,000 spectators, 12,500 meals served, and over 15 head of cattle that had come through Brookings in the month of July. Budget and finance, again, we are in the, the midst of that. Uh, one of the great additions that Chelsea has made is a new, uh, budget and finance webpage where you can find things like the annual budget, broken down into the most important parts, our fee schedule, budget and brief, and some of the presentations that have been provided to council throughout this process. As about the process itself, we did have our first reading this evening, the second reading, and CIP adoption is scheduled for September 8th, and we do have that September 22nd contingency date available if there were to be any changes to the budget at the next meeting. Uh, solid waste update, we did see an uptick in the homes that are recycling in Brookings, um, from 2019 to 2020. We're now up to 87% of homes recycling. Um, for the raw numbers, that's about 4,709 of 5,400 customers that are recycling. Our tonnage for this year for recycling is also up. Uh, in comparison to July of 2019, we're up about nine tons, 525 tons in comparison to 516. Uh, we have seen a reduction, uh, through our, uh, Millennium Recycling, where we take our recycling. We've heard good news that they're seeing less plastic ra, bags in the recycling that are coming, not only from Brookings, but there are other customers. So I would like to believe that some of our education efforts of the community have been fruitful in that regard. Over 3,100 yard waste carts have been delivered. Uh, I was informed by our solid waste director, Todd Langland, that there was another 20 actually taken out last week, so those continue to be popular and being distributed to members of our community. The Citizens Campus is complete. Um, this will be an area for residents to drop off yard waste and pick up compost for free. We will have a ribbon cutting out there tomorrow, August 26th, at 9 a.m. The, uh, cell construction is anticipated to wrap up yet this week, and then some final paperwork will be submitted to the D E N R for approval. That approval process is anticipated to take about two weeks, and we will be able to start placing refuse into that new cell at that time. Had to do a little bit different take on our summer recreation for this year due to COVID. Um, Dusty and the park staff did a great job of altering and adapting some of our programs. Some that we offer this year were our free-range kids, kids yoga, and hydrant parties. Uh, free-range kids really encourage the kids to get out and play and, uh, encourage creativity from the participants. There are multiple stations set up with a variety of yard games, long springlers, et cetera. Hydrant parties were helped with the process of the fire department. They were similar, but focused on water activities to include squirt guns, water balloons, and of course, the fire trucks. Uh, fire training site, this is one that's a bit of an internal one, but this is very exciting for the folks there and the fire department and our volunteers, as well as our full-time staff. There's a variety of uses that this indoor facility will offer for search and rescue operations, confined spaces, and things of that nature. This is a very innovative pro, uh, project that was brought forward by Chief Hartman. This is actually, um, the old shed down at the south training site, and he had re-envisioned what was essentially a garage to make this great facility to provide that wonderful training for our volunteers. Um, and he did it very budget-consciously. He made it a three-year project to do as much labor in-house as he could. Um, this, most recently, they did do the restrooms and floorings. As you can see, the floors look fantastic, and that project will finish up in next year and be fully operational. Last item for tonight, uh, may not typically be too interesting, but this one's special for us. We did take, uh, two new patrol squads in. This is an annual replacement, but what's special about these squads are they're the first hybrid squads to our fleet. So this was a conscientious effort by Chief Erickson and the police department to experiment with these SUV hybrids that are anticipated to get better gas mileage and also save on, um, maintenance costs in the long run. We did experience a delay due to the Ford, uh, factory closing down for a while due to COVID, but we did receive those, uh, and have them now. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Nope, I think you did such a great job. There's no questions. Okay, now, Assistant City Manager, and I know he's got some really great help here tonight to speak to a COVID-19 update.
Thank you, Mayor, City Councilmembers, and I'm glad I updated my number since the city, Assistant City Manager, uh, gave you an update here with the most recent numbers. Thank you, Jake. Uh, the following information that I'll provide you guys tonight was from the South Dakota Department of, of Health, professionals from SDSU and the hospital and other clinic, and other local clinics. As Jake noted, uh, Brookings currently has 195 positive cases. Uh, since the last report 14 days ago, Brookings has increased roughly 55 new positive cases. There are, there have been no additional deaths due to COVIDs here in Brookings, and there are 36 active cases and 159 cases that have recovered. Approximately 3,067 tests have occurred. As of Monday, the state was at a 21%, and Brookings at an 18% test, testing positive. Hospitalization bed management plan is still at Level 1. Um, Brookings County has moved from substantial to, uh, to substantial community spread to moderate, and this change was based mainly on new criteria. For Brookings, for example, within Brookings County, um, the new criteria notes one to three new cases, uh, from the previous week, uh, is considered, uh, minimal spread. Four through 33 new cases from the previous week is considered moderate, which we're currently in. And 34 or more new cases from the previous week is considered substantial. Of interest is that the threshold for, for, uh, determining what criteria to use is right around that 35,000 mark, and we just barely meet that requirement based on, on census estimates. But that is the new criteria that we'll be utilizing to determine our, our, uh, spread here locally. Daily testing average is about 43 a day, which is up slightly from here a week or two ago. Testing results are occurring within three to five days. Um, there was some comments made earlier about process, timing, and what have you. Here, just two, three weeks ago, shortly after the Fourth of July, we were receiving tests back about five days, and then that contract tasting anywhere from five to seven days after that. So the reality is sometimes people won't know 10 to 12 days after they, they've been infected, giving them opportunity to infect others. Right now, because testing is occurring a little bit quicker, we are seeing a quicker turnaround of that three to five days for the testing. I don't have any contract tracing dates yet, but I can find out that information and share it with council and the public as well. The city is still in current Phase 3, uh, which opens businesses to 50% occupancy, requiring employees to wear masks. The city council took action tonight, uh, or heard the first hearing. The second hearing will be held September 8th. I will note that, uh, the guidelines moving between phases was given earlier as well, um, but currently, we only meet with the one threshold, which is hospitalization. But the mitigation through the testing was very close as well, if you look within the report. Um, Laura with the CVB, who is, I'm sorry, the CVB Director, is present to discuss the current Brookings pledge. This is an effort of businesses and communities to take a pledge in an effort to protect the entire community of COVID. I will note that the city operations have taken this pledge, and I asked Laura to come up and speak to their efforts. Uh, we have the CVB in our community.
Thank you, and, uh, thank you all for allowing me to be here today. Uh, you, as a city, and all the city departments are one of, or many, I guess, of upwards of 150 businesses and organizations in our community who have taken the pledge, and, uh, we also have a number of residents. So, uh, congratulations to you, and thank you to all the businesses who've joined onto the pledge. Uh, just a reminder, this is just a, a pledge for all of us on the business side and organization side to do our very best to be good neighbors, to do responsible actions so we can mitigate the pandemic. Simple things that you've been hearing about for many, many months now, the CDC guidelines of washing your hands frequently, following the social distancing guidelines, cleaning, sanitizing, wearing the mask if you can't social distance. Of course, if you are a business who has mandated to wear those masks, please continue to do so. If you have employees that are not feeling well, send them home, and make sure that all of your employees within your business understand what the pledge is all about and get them to, uh, to join onto the pledge as well. And then, of course, when we leave our businesses, we are residents of the community, and we have a responsibility in that aspect as well. So if you go into a store, come out of a store, make sure you wash and sanitize. Follow the social distancing guidelines when you're in the stores and doing all those other things. Just, uh, avoid direct contact if you are sitting in a restaurant or in an area where you have direct contact. Make sure you have, uh, distance there. Again, wear that mask when you can. If you are home, stay, or if you're sick, stay home, and of course, you know, it, COVID stays on small surfaces. Use your credit card or debit card instead of paper money and change. So all simple things, uh, we encourage people, if you haven't taken the pledge yet, you can find it on our website, visitbrookingssd.com. It's on the screens that rotate, so you can click it there, but if you don't want to wait for the screens to rotate, go to our resource page and you can find it there. If you take the pledge, you will get an email that has a toolkit of things, uh, like social media posts, of a poster that you can print and post in your window. And we will also list, and we have been listing all of those businesses who have taken the pledge themselves, and you can find that on our website as well. So thank you again for your participation, and, uh, we hope that anyone watching will continue to join us in keeping our community safe.
One, one question I have for you.
You bet.
When will Visit Brookings be open? The, your new offices, I went by there yesterday, and it looks like there's a lot of work yet.
We, uh, we're very excited, um, and this is probably good for you, as well as the community, to know. Uh, Monday is our moving day, so we are closing down on Monday. Uh, we're packing up, actually, Tuesday is the actual moving day. So we're closing our offices. If you can't get ahold of us, it's because we're, we don't have phones at the moment. Uh, so we will open on Tuesday, September 8th, the day after Labor Day, in our new facility, and we invite you all to come in. We'd be happy to give you a tour.
I have a question for you, too. I was curious if you have any, um, website metrics yet from the pledge, as far as like how many, um, I know you're listing the businesses that are, that are signing on, maybe not the individuals, or maybe more of them, but like what, how many people have downloaded the kit and actually?
You know, um, we need to take a look at that, honestly. I'm, we've been getting, uh, responses all day long of people who have responded to us, so I, I think that's something that I should check into.
And maybe you're hearing anecdotally from, um, you know, groups representing conferences and things like that, too. Are, are you hearing positive vibes from?
Right now, I think we're just in the distribution phase of that, so, uh, we, we probably are, are, probably should reach out to the businesses that have pledged, just to maybe do a follow-up and say, just make sure you're downloading and posting and those kind of things. So I, I think as we continue to roll out and make some personal visits, I think that will continue to, to happen. Um, again, I just want to remind people that it is very voluntary as well. Uh, that, that's something that's important. Um, but yeah, we encourage people to do that and happy to answer questions if, uh, people have them. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Do you have any other? Paul? Okay. Okay, moving ahead to September 8th, the next meeting. We'll, um, deal with everything tonight that we had from the 2021 budget, waiving sidewalk cafe permits, the COVID ordinance that we discussed, we'll be second reading on that one. Let's see, looking ahead, we'll have a bid awarding on traffic signals, uh, a potential budget amendment ordinance from our good CFO there. So what else do you have, council? Or, Councilman Wendell?
Thank you, Mayor Corbett. When we were last together, we discussed the settlement agreement between the City of Brookings and Brookings County related to the jail expansion, but we didn't have a finalized agreement just yet. Uh, I think it'd be appropriate to bring what I assume is now a finalized agreement back before this body, so at least we can confirm what language was used. Uh, uh, and I think September 8th might be an appropriate time to do that.
Okay. Okay, the city attorney's giving that north-to-south nod, so, okay. Ready? Yeah, Councilmember Brink.
This is something that's not time-sensitive, so we can sit on this for a while, but sometime before next summer, I'd like to see us have a study session about, um, the possible sale of fireworks in Brookings County and Brookings community, and just trying to understand how those regulations work together and what's allowed and not allowed, and see if there's any changes that we would maybe want to make. So maybe that's a study session topic months down the road, but just something to put on, on your guys' radar.
Councilmember Tilton Byrne, do you have anything?
Nothing here.
Okay. All right, I'm looking at our Public Information Officer. You want us on the west side of the building, is that correct? All right. So with that, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Good night.
Holly has left.